Welcome, everyone. Before we begin tonight, I just want to welcome a new member to our team, Dan Laverdu, Economic Development Manager, has recently joined the Kirkland Lake team. We're super excited to have you and can't wait to see how you move our municipality forward. So, welcome. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin people, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Anishinaabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment to end responsibility to reconciliation, call to order, and a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Janet Ranger, seconded by Councilor La Chaba. Be resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council, held on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, be approved as amended to include item 12.1 proclamation, remembrance, between November 5th through the 11th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of pecuniary interest. Anything from the table? Thank you. So I myself have a disclosure this evening. I, Stacy White, am declaring direct pecuniary interest on the agenda of the meeting dated October 17th, 2023, in open session. Agenda number 6.5, agenda titled Request for Parade Permit KLDCC Santa Claus Parade. Sorry, it is indirect, as I am a member of a body. So by virtue of my duties as mayor, I do stand on this board, but I will remove myself from discussions. And item number four, petitions and delegations. There are none this evening. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations, 5.1, council minutes.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Dolly Dykens. It resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council, held October 3rd, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. Item number 6.1, Terms of Reference, Economic Development and Tourism Strategic Plan. Alan Smith, Cao, and Dan Laverdu, Manager of Economic Development and Tourism.
Good evening, through you, Madam Mayor, to council. On September 27th, the Economic Development Advisory Committee recommended the proposed terms of reference for a refreshed economic development strategic plan. As we're all aware, the economic realities in Kirkland Lake have changed substantially. The evolution of mining, employment challenges, infrastructure pressures, immigration, newcomers, and housing are several of the opportunities and challenges that are facing the local landscape. We proposed to move into a strategic plan. The last strategic plan was done in 2015, and there's been a lot changed since then. A proposed plan will help initiate the vision and mission for the new established Town and Kirkland Lake Tourism Corporation. So it will set us off for our vision moving forward. In closing, Kirkland Lake's experienced significant changes in its economic realities in the last 10 years. I think it's a crucial time to fully understand the implications, challenges, and great opportunities that lie ahead for the town so we can position ourselves to a bright and prosperous future. Thank you.
Any questions for members of council? None noted.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owens, seconded by Councilor Patrick Emy. Be resolved at report number 2023DEV42 entitled Terms of Reference, Economic Development and Tourism Strategic Plan be received. That council received the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee's recommendation dated September 27th, 2023 regarding the proposed terms of reference for an economic development and tourism strategic plan for the corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake. And that council approved the terms of reference for the development of an economic development and tourism strategic plan for the corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake as presented. And finally, that council directed Chief Administrative Officer to initiate a request for proposal to retain consultancy firm to complete an economic development and tourism strategic plan based on the approved terms of reference.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item number 6.2, Revised Ten Year Road Reconstruction Plan. Stephan Forte, Director of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. Here you to council, I'm here today to present an updated or an updated Ten Year Road Reconstruction Plan and to answer any questions you may have. The first version of the Ten Year Plan was presented to council in March of this year, and priorities were basically on the age of the infrastructure and the existing condition of the assets. It is expected that revisions to the city will be presented to council on an annual basis because new information does surface routinely, which does change our focus and our priorities. The revised plan still contains the same approach, which is to design one project per year and to construct one project per year as well. The revised plan in this case has two major changes that are worth noting. The purpose would be the addition of a new project, which is the reconstruction of a 400-meter section of Tweedsmere Road, essentially in front of Civic Park. This area is quite popular and experiences high volumes of pedestrians and vehicles. This summer, the Director of Community Services was kind enough to invite me to Civic Park during the food market. It was a beautiful summer day, and I was amazed to see how many people were there. There were vehicles poorly parked everywhere, creating visual obstructions, and there were pedestrians coming and going in all directions. It was obvious to me at that point that we must make this area a priority for our community. This project has been inserted into the Ten Year Plan starting with design next year. The project will include upgrades to the Shadow Storm system on that street. Will include a new sidewalk in front of Civic Park. Parking spaces, including accessible parking. Also, due to high pedestrian traffic, the pedestrian crosswalk will be entertained in the design phase of the project. The last thing I would like to mention for Civic is the ongoing concern with the sidewalk delineation. Until this area is actually reconstructed, vehicles will likely continue to park over the sidewalk that once existed in that location, which does bring a safety concern. So the Public Works Department is ready to purchase and to install temporary yellow plastic parking curbs to properly delineate that sidewalk until the area is fully reconstructed, and that would be installed the next year. The second major change to the Ten Year Plan is the reconstruction of Duncan Avenue North from Prospect to Goodfish Row. Originally, we were supposed to pave that area this year, but due to high costs and due to discovering the age of the infrastructure was from the 1920s, the decision was made not to pave that area this year. This project will require full reconstruction and is expected to start in 2029, as per the revised plan. The Ten Year Road Reconstruction Plan is a great flexible guide for staff and council to use a year round, especially important during budget deliberation, which is around the corner. This concludes my presentation for today.
Thank you. So just before I open it, two other questions. I was just wondering with the Duncan section, because we have discovered that the infrastructure is from 1920, why is it that it was postponed so late into the plan rather than earlier?
No problem. We took all the water main breaks that we've had over the past several years, and we mapped them out online. What I was expecting was more of a clusters, more indicating, okay, well, this area of town will need more attention rather than this area of town. But to my surprise, it was completely scattered across town. So there is no area that requires more focus than the other in regards to water main breaks. So that was the one thing I looked after Duncan Avenue North, is are there more frequent breaks in that area rather versus other streets? It was all comparable. Everything was rather the same. So I didn't want to take away from any other projects that were already in the plan, and I inserted it where I felt was best.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Councilor Ranger.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Stephan. Is there any discussion so early in the project as to the type of parking that you guys will be creating at Civic Park? There's been a couple of options that have been proposed, so I'm just wondering if that's something you're looking at, or is it, will it be sort of parallel, straight parking?
That's pretty good. Ranger, this is something that in the design, we're going to be looking at with the XPS to maximize the amount of parking ability that we can give ourselves. I know there's been discussion as to which method is best, whether straight parking or go parking. It will depend on the designers and how they can make it fit into the into the project so that it doesn't become any other safety concerns. But that is something that we're looking at to try to maximize on the amount of parking spaces.
Right, continue. This is the second part of that question. I'm not sure what the name of the street is, but...
The missing lane.
Yes, thank you. Do we own any of that property that's across from Civic Park itself? Because people tend to park there as well, and is that being considered as part of this project? Or it would be supplemental in the future?
This would not be part of this project, but it's something that we can definitely consider because there is a small piece of land between the missing lane and the ONR tracks close to this top line. There is, that area would require full depth excavation and reinstatement, and there's a lot of storm ditches, open ditches in that area. All of it is possible. It would require a design on its own. But yes, there is space there, it appears.
Councilor Owen, you are next.
Oh, yes, sir. I have a question about Duncan Avenue North.
Okay.
You're going to ask me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Has there been any concern about the finding of sinkholes in that area and how that will affect your reconstruction or infrastructure building in that section?
Sinkholes?
Yes. There have been sinkholes found between Moesian and the Desav Building. K.O. Golden, another survey, have been done in that, between that parking lot in between. So I suspect there may be concerns or...
It's something I would have to look into. I'm not familiar with those sinkholes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Councilor Owen.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I talked to my private consultant today, Stephan, and what Stephan said about, it doesn't make sense, but just because a pipe is 100 years old doesn't mean it's gonna break before the pipe is 30 years old. And my private consultant used to be the water works man, foreman. So, and it was interesting because when I was talking to him about Duncan Avenue, he said, well, we've only had one break there, and that's 100-year-old pipe in the time that he worked there, which was 15 years. So I do have a question about why Hudson Bay is so low on the list and why Wright-Hardgraves is in year four? Because Hudson Bay is in far worse shape than Wright-Hardgraves. That block, let's see, there is, Hudson Bay is not till year 10. And that block between Duncan and Prospect is virtually undrivable at times. Like I've had to pull off onto the shoulder, and yet Wright-Hardgraves, I can drive around, no problem. You know, I just question, not questioning doing the roads, I'm just questioning the order.
Good gosh, we're going. And I would have to go take a look at my notes, but if my memory serves me well, there was more water break.
On Duncan, there is.
On Duncan, there is, and Wright-Hardgraves as well. There was a lot of water main breaks that were identified over the last few years, but again, I would have to take a look at my notes. If I remember correctly, the asphalt condition on Hudson Bay is worse.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at the surface, so. But I do know that section...
Sorry, Councilor, just a reminder that it's not a conversation.
Well, I'm sorry, your worship. Through you, your worship.
Thank you, sir.
To Stephan. I know that section on Duncan Avenue from Second Street through to Omara, there's been a number of water main breaks, as well as there's been at least two breaks in recent time behind, directly behind Fire Hall. So that is a very...
Councilor Owen, you are next.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just because it's the first year we've, since we've been on council level, we've taken some road construction. How are we doing on the design phase for next year's construction? Are we on track or...?
All designs are on track.
So we're good to start springtime, soon to snowbowl, we can start digging our streets up?
That is though.
Good to know.
Thank you, sir. Councilor, thank you.
Uh, to you, Madam Mayor, to Patrick Forten. My question is in regards to the process. Again, just as a reminder, did I understand that it was made and determined what projects were going first, or was that things department?
That was the worst department that determined the priority level. We had an independent contractor coming a few years ago that sets the condition of our address.
That's all.
It's of the road surface, how matter of law for this.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. You were going to pave the road, and then we discovered that the infrastructure was like... Is that taken into consideration now when you're going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's good. Anything further from members of council? Thank you. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Rick Owens. Be resolved at report number 2023 PW13 entitled Revised Ten Year Road Reconstruction Plan be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item number 6.3, Police Services Board Reform and OPP Contract Extension, Jennifer Montroy, Municipal Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council. What a delighted was nine-page report. Since the report is self-explanatory, I will not summarize in great detail, except to note the following. The report was developed to provide you all with a timeline associated with the reforms being brought forward in connection with the Community Pleasing Act and the impacts to the police services board, that the proposal that was submitted, including the town, in the proposal, was accepted by the Office of the Solicitor General, and that the current status is statusful until the regulations are enacted, that there will be two council representatives that will sit on the new board, together with the opportunity for members of the town who can apply to consider us community representatives of the board. Also, given that the regulations surrounding the CPSA have yet to take effect, the OPP reached out to the town to enter into a third amending agreement for OPP contracted services, which is still in accordance with the current Police Services Act. And as noted in the report, future billing model for such services will differ from those we are accustomed to since the town transitioned from its local police force to a provincial police force for policing services. And finally, that any financial impacts related to this reform will be presented to and available for review by council. Were available during the 2024 budget deliberations and beyond. And that is the summary of my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilor Owen.
And I'm going to give you a pretty warning that this may not be in order. How do the municipalities that do not have a policing contract pay for their policing?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to all council and to the other council, Owen. I believe they have committees that they also receive OPP billing in the same capacity, just under a different section of the Police Services Act.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Nothing else, sir.
Moved by Councilor Janet Ranger, seconded by Councilor La Chaba. Be resolved at report number 2023 CLK16 entitled Police Services Board Reform with OPP Contract Extension be received. And that council hereby acknowledged the corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake's composition on the future Pidus Detachment Board is as established and approved by the Ministry of the Solicitor General, and that the Mayor Municipal Kirkby authorized to enter into a third amending agreement on behalf of the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake with His Majesty the King in writing Ontario as represented by the Solicitor General for the provision of police services under Section 10 of the Police Services Act, extending to December 31st, 2024, or until such time that the Community Safety and Pleasing Act regulations are completed and take effect. And finally, that in execution by law, we brought forth three readings on November 7th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. Item number 6.4, Tech Pioneer Residence Committee of Management Updated Terms of Reference, Jennifer Montroy, Municipal Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to the whole of council. The Tech Pioneer Residence Committee of Management annually review their Terms of Reference due to the pandemic and operating constraints that is managing various outbreaks. The Committee of Management did not meet in 2022. This term, the Committee of Management have been meeting regularly in accordance with their legislative obligation, and annually, the duty of the committee is to review their Terms of Reference, which they did so this year. While preparing for the annual review of its Terms of Reference, administration have noted some inconsistencies with the language and the legislative reference and assisted with the drafting of the proposed Terms of Reference, which is attachment two in your report package to reflect the ordinance of other similar long-term care committees of management. Such updates were proposed to update all of those different components, including providing clearer language surrounding composition, membership responsibility, meaning management advice to council, and provide for the clear delineation of officers and delegated authorities. As such, the Committee of Management was presented with and has recommended the approved proposed Terms of Reference. And that is my summary, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Before opening the floor to questions, just as a point of transparency, I wanted to note that normally I do remove myself from conversations regarding TPR just because it was such a high level. I did seek advice from RIC, and she had determined that there was no need to declare as the decision before council in this item does not involve any financial considerations, only housekeeping amendments to the Committee of Terms of Reference. So that's why I'm not declaring pecuniary on this item. Any questions from the floor? None noted. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Certainly moved by Councilor Rick Owens, seconded by Councilor Casey Owens. Be resolved at report number 2023 CLK17 entitled Pioneer Residence Committee of Management Updated Terms of Reference be received. And finally, that council approved the updated Terms of Reference for the Tech Pioneer Committee of Management as presented.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilor Ranger to take the chair in place of acting mayor Pat Kylie, who is attending virtually. Request for a parade permit KLDCC Santa Claus Parade, Jennifer Montroy, Municipal Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Kirkland Lake Chamber of Commerce has requested permission to host their annual Santa Claus Parade on Saturday, November 25th, between the hours of 6:30 and 8:30 PM. In terms of agency comments or concerns, the Ontario Provincial Police, together with Kirkland Lake Detachment, the Town's Bylaw Enforcement Division, and the Fire Emergency Services Department all cited no objections with the request. In terms of road closure notices, historically, parade volunteer court made road closure requests directly with the Town's Public Works Department, who takes on the responsibility for providing road closure notices to residents on the town's social media platform. Public Works Department did cite a safety concern from last year's event, whereas it appears that the requesting agency had not installed the road barricades as supplied to them by the department. So to mitigate this issue from reoccurring should a permit be issued, I will be clearly identifying to the requesting agency that the installation of their barricades supplied are their sole responsibility to install, and that failing to install them may result in a charge of staff time to ensure the safety of pedestrians, or may result in a non-permitting for future events. As noted in the report, historically, no fees have been collected from any of the requesting organizations with a request to the parade permit itself. Such council has been presented with a recommendation to formally waive the requirement as outlined in Bylaw 8665. Their requesting agency does provide the town with a certificate of insurance annually, and administration perceives no issue with council approving a parade permit for this type of historical community event as allowing the parade to materialize will promote positive community partnerships, which is in line with the council's strategic objectives and priorities. I'm available for any questions. Should the council approve of that?
Any questions from the floor? None noted?
Certainly can. Moved by Councilor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Councilor La Chaba. Be resolved at report number 2023 CLK17 entitled Request for Parade Permit KLDCC Santa Claus Parade be received. And that council directs that a parade permit be issued to the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce for Saturday, November 25th, 2023, between the hours of 6:30 PM and 8:30 PM. And finally, that council hereby waive the $100 permit fee requirement as outlined in Bylaw 8665.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted.
I don't know the proper term is. I'm just curious. I see the report number in entry 20, and then inside the documents, so 17. I don't know if I'm misreading it or...
It says 2023 CLK17. I think it's mis...
And then, yeah, and on top it says 2020. I just...
All, what you see on top is the naming of the actual report.
The report number?
Yeah, it was mistyped when it was put into the system. But I can tell you that the actual report number is 2023 CLK17. So, no, 17 is the Committee of Management, so.
Yes.
It is CLK20.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is noted. I will make sure that it's amended. Thank you.
Item 6.6, 2024, Council and Communities of Council Meeting Schedules, Jennifer Montroy, Municipal Clerk.
Madam Mayor. For certain councilors to proceed with Bylaw as amended, an annual meeting calendar council, regular meetings, and those of its committees should be established and approved where appropriate. The 2024 meeting schedules for the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board and Kirkland Lake Police Services Board, which are referenced in attachment two, are supplied to council for information purposes only as those both dates are subject to formal approval by the board. And in keeping with the legislation governing the whole, so it is the Public Libraries Act, the Police Services Act now will be the Community Safety and Pleasing Act. The town has yet to receive the proposed 2024 meeting schedules from local or regional boards. Those schedules are subject to approval by those independent boards and not this council. However, in an effort to remove any conflicts, my office will be circulating council's 2024 calendar in an effort to alleviate any meeting conflicts for those members also representing the town on those local and regional boards. As always, staff remains vigilant in communicating any changes to the calendar schedules directly with the members, posted publicly on the town's website, advising local media, and noted on social media outlets. That is the summary of my report. But I'm there. I'm available for questions if council has...
Thank you. Any questions? None noted? None of the motion base?
Certainly moved by Councilor Patrick Cravis, seconded by Councilor Janet Ranger. Be resolved at report number 2023 CLK21 entitled 2024 Council and Communities of Council Meeting Schedules be received. That council approved the 2024 regular council meeting schedules I presented. That council approved the 2024 regular meeting of council meeting schedules I presented. And finally, that council received the proposed 2024 regular meeting schedules for the Kirkland Public Library Board and Kirkland Police Services Board for information.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous. Considerations of notice of motions. At this time, I will again ask Councilor Ranger to take the chair in place of acting Chair and Councilor Pat Kylie.
Number 7.1, Considerations of Notions and Motions. Mayor Stacy Wright, Northern School of Medicine University, support.
Thank you, Councilor Ranger. Through you to members of council. I believe the notice of motion itself lays out the details pretty clearly about why we're bringing this motion to you this evening. It is absolutely vital that the Ontario government supports the Northern School of Medicine as their... as their existence improves the quality of life for everyone in the North. They're asking for our support to petition the government to increase the annual funding base by four million permanently by the end of this year so that they continue to deliver on the mandate established by the Conservative government. Thank you. Councilor Dolly Dykenz?
I want to do, Acting Mayor. Healthcare is vital in the North and we know that it's lacking in many ways. And hopefully, by solidly funding the Northern School of Medicine, it will help fill those gaps in the North.
Definitely. Any other questions from the floor?
That are to you, Madam Acting Mayor, to to this motion. I'm in official part of this. I think the whole idea of the job mission is the residency medical school in the North is for the northern people to disturb it. And it's been there for quite a bit now. What I'd like to see, and I did discuss this when I met the the President of that medical school. And I believe for now, meeting of this one, the last one in the month day, that it'd be nice for some of the municipalities, if not all of us, to start getting status update about what's happening in that university. I'd like to know how many of our own very people, young people from the North are going to the university. Because the whole idea is of that university is for the northern people. Not all the time, but for most of them to go there with the hotel when they get out. They're staying, you know. I don't lie here, but it's just that I like to see this motion pass and I'd like to see a letter to the to the President of that university, to Alista, make once in a while this a round of conversation about what's happening in that university, especially in terms of enrollment and how many people are graduated and how many of them are actually staying, you know. If we don't have those statistics, guys, we'll be losing value to really justify funding. We get eighty percent of people from the South going to that university and eighty percent of graduates, they're going back to the South to service. I mean, what is the, I mean, what are we supporting? So I like to see a status update, but it's a good idea to make sure that that funding is sustained and keep the funding there. Thank you very much.
Councilor Shaba, I just want to let you know that as somebody who works in post-secondary institutions, they have what is called key performance indicators, which is public information. All post-secondary supported or funded Ontario schools are required to post their key performance indicators. And one of those is graduates and because they're mandated to have a certain number of seeds required for those that live in the North and would continue to work in the North. We can probably access most of that information without requesting it from the president, but I understand and I support your concept as to requesting that information, but I think we should look and see if that isn't already available on their website or through requesting that, what we're looking for.
Yeah, can I just follow up? I think the KPIs are very good. I've looked at their website and I tell you one thing. It's very good, but very generic in nature. Eighty percent of graduates got jobs. Okay, I would think I like that, but where do they get the jobs? So a lot of those things, they don't really drill down to to give you something in the north say, hey, we are moving towards having more doctors, more trained doctors for the North and all that. It doesn't tell us that. Maybe it is going that way, but I don't, from what I see on their website, there's nothing there to say that. So if any institution is going to come to the municipal, they're just saying, we're in the North, you have to support us. But you gotta give me data to say, well, listen, this is my contribution to the North. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, there. Yeah, so just to address that, I do think you're on to something there. She had the past, I don't know if she's still the same president. I would have to look. She had delegated to council in the past, so that is something that we can definitely extend an invitation to delegate just quickly and let us have updates. So that's definitely a brilliant idea. Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, Acting Mayor. I have heard those stats about how many people stay in the North. They do track it. I've seen it on MCTV, not recently. Don't ask me what the percentages were. It was a long time ago. But I know that that they do track that because it was on the news. So the news had to get it from the university.
Any other question? Comments?
Please move the motion. Certainly moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Dolly Dykenz. Whereas the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake recognized the urgent need for physicians in Northern Ontario as it is experiencing a shortage of trained physicians, as best of the specialist physicians. And whereas life expectancy of Northern residents is more than two years lower than the Ontario average and mental health and addictions are at a four times higher rate. And whereas one in eight, eight Northern residents does not have access to a family doctor and many must travel long distances to access healthcare services, representing the failure of healthcare in Northern Ontario. And whereas communities in Northern Ontario require access to health care, especially underserved rural indigenous and front of home communities. And whereas in April of twenty twenty two, the government announced an unprecedented medical expansion for NOSM universities' medical program. Programs. And whereas the current base funding rates for the Northern School of Medicine University have not been increased sufficiently to accommodate growth and expansion. Therefore, be resolved that the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake strongly request the provincial government grant NOSM universities' request for a permanent increase in annual base funding by four million dollars before the end of this fiscal year. So it can continue to deliver on a mandate that the Conservative government initially established in responsive needs of Northern municipalities. And finally, that a copy of this motion be forwarded to Premier Doug Ford, Minister of Health and Deputy Premier Sylvia Jones, Minister of Colleges and Universities, Bill Gunhoff, MP Pete Tom Vantoff for Knessau May Cochrane, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, which is AML, Northern Ontario School of Medicine University, which is NOSMU, Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, which is FANOM, Northern Ontario Academic Medicine Association with MOA MOA, and all municipalities within the District of Knessau.
All in favor? Any votes? None? Go to the chair. Again, thank the Councilor Ranger. Item number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. There are none this evening. Yeah. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There are also none this evening. Item number ten, notices of motion, Councilor Shaba.
Just to you, what if I'm just attending this today? There would be a motion for a next meeting respecting with respect to the Kirkland Lake Drive Center hours of operations.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council? Councilor Owen?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I will pause to be moved at the next meeting, a motion concerning traffic coming.
Okay. Anything further? Nothing noted? Good. Item number eleven, councillors' reports. Anything for members of council? Councilor Owens?
So as where I sit on the teaching board, some could be passed a motion formally starting a process to merge technically helping work by not here. And I know when you speak about mergers, it scares people locally because people automatically assume we're going to new services. And as a board member, I want to make this clear that that is not the intent. The intent of this merger is really to find efficiencies between both organizations to offer the best service, best services to our population. That being said, at this last meeting, the actual motion to start the process was brought out of closed into open meeting. Because the the group has been struck, so the group discussing merger work on merger is now created and it's led by Dr. Martin Sprout and Dr. Cornel was our acting MOA and the one for Timmins. And it was brought forward with a little modification from when we passed it in August concerning other discussions the provinces have for mergers of health units provincewide. So the foregovernment had started this in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen before COVID. COVID hit, kind of changed the landscape a bit. And their vision is to cut down on the amount of health units in the province and their their vision is a population threshold of five hundred thousand, which we would not meet with a PHU and THU merger. So but we're still moving forward. We we meet the other criterias and what we've added to the language is this line here. So furthermore, that the Board of Health or the Knessau Medical does not support discussion nor work towards mergers beyond these two health units. If we were to merge with or Nevising or some area, it is Sabry or Algoma, we would be completely lost in an organization of that size. So we're focused on Knessau and Orkney, find those two fit really well together. And that's what we're moving to. And we've made that clear with this motion that asking from our last.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from council? Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, worship. I attended the ONR's show and tell about the Ontario Northlander. I'm disappointed that no one wants to put a date on when that train's going to hit the tracks. They have a vague goal of twenty twenty six, but they won't put it in writing anywhere. And that was that was discouraging. And I went over, they had this thing called a timeline. I went over specifically because I wanted to see something in writing, which means a commitment that this train is going to hit tracks by a certain date. And there were no times, no dates. So I called over one of their people that was there and I said, you've got to change the name of this. This is not a timeline. There's no times. You can put stages of of development to the train. But I said, I came over here looking for dates. She took my notes, but I don't think they're going to change it. Now, on the positive side, when the train hits the tracks, we have an opportunity to partner with the ONR to promote Kirkland Lake. I, being an old salesman, tried to sell them on the fact that we shouldn't have to pay anything because we would increase their ridership and they'd make it back that way. At which time the ONR representative said, yes, but part of my job is creating revenue. But she did say there is definitely room for partnership on that aspect. So I think it's something that we might want to look into and look into early so we can get the best displays or whatever. Everything is, I mean, some things are nailed down, but a lot of things concerning that train are still up in the air. They're still in the design phase and that's part of the reason they're having these show and tells around Northern Ontario. So, yeah, I I'd like to encourage that we potentially could promote Kirkland Lake on the train.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Anything from other members of council? Okay, for my part, I just wanted to remind everyone that October fifteenth to the twenty first is local government meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to increase their civic awareness. It was developed by the Province of Ontario Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, and Association of Municipalities. All week, the Town of Kirkland Lake will be creating opportunities for residents to learn more about their local government. So keep your eyes and ears to social media, media like CJK and Northern News. And of course, all of our Twitter feeds, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll be sharing news as the week progresses. As far as the Office of the Mayor, I had the honor of presenting a Town of Kirkland Lake pin to each member of the Kirkland Lake Air Cadets with a brief personalized message to each of the individuals, speaking about community pride, using what they learned at Air Cadets to become future community leaders. So it was really an interesting opportunity to speak individually on one. I did attend the Planet Youth Steering Committee. The momentum continues to grow with this important initiative. As of September twenty sixth, we were officially signed on with Planet Youth and received our implementation guide. We received the surveys, which will be put out to students in grade ten and eleven all across our district. And that will allow us to begin our footings with clear statistics from local residents. I spoke with Chris St Pierre of CDC regarding the possible effects of the closure of Delshin Therapeutics in twenty twenty one after the purchase by Hexacorp. But I never, even when we're discussing something that may be a challenge, I take the opportunity to discuss our opportunities. And of course, so the ideas of char technology and the opportunity of a dicoeagle number four shot. I attended the open house for Ontario Northland as well, which they they were not only informing the public of details of planning, but also seeking input on local producers of food and refreshments and opinions about paint schemes and the trains themselves. Myself, CEO Alan Smith, and ED Manager Dan Lever Leverdewer, I had an in-person meeting with the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, Grayden Smith, Char Technologies, Roscoe Forestry, and a Tippi First Nation, in which a variety of issues were covered, but most importantly, the groundbreaking for char, which will occur in the spring of twenty twenty four. And that meeting was in person in Kirkland Lake. Lastly, I attended the Lions Club Gala Saturday night to celebrate their becoming a chartered club. This will open more doors for the volunteer group, including being able to raise funds. It truly is the dedication of people like this that make Kirkland Lake all that it is. Everything good in our community truly comes from a volunteer. So thank you to everyone that takes time to make Kirkland Lake better. Thank you. Please move the motion.
Certainly moved by Councilor Patrick Cravis, seconded by Councilor Dolly Dykenz. It resolve that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. I am very. Item number twelve, which is the addition of twelve point one, Remembrance Week Proclamation. Whereas each year Canadians take time to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice to our country. And whereas annually, citizens nationwide formally pause on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month to remember those who trained and fought for our country. With some paying the ultimate sacrifice, some coming home whole and others not so fortunate. And whereas in this year, the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby declares November sixth through eleven as Remembrance Week to remember those who fought and died for Canada. And whereas during Remembrance Week, we honor and pay our respects to those who fought and died, those who came home broken in body and in spirit, and those who continue to fight for peace and the freedoms we enjoy today. And whereas during Remembrance Week, everyone is encouraged to support their local Royal Canadian Legion branch and wear a poppy in remembrance of the fallen. And whereas the Town of Kirkland Lake recognizes the bravery, courage, and sacrifices of all Canadian veterans, whether on current peacekeeping missions here at home, assisting in search and rescue, or assisting with natural disasters across the country and internationally with continued honor for those who are serving and their families. Now, I therefore, Stacy White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim November fifth to the eleventh, twenty twenty three, Remembrance Week.
Moved by Councilor Dolly Dykenz, seconded by Councilor Rick Owens. It resolve that council sanction the proclamation for Remembrance Week in the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, we will now take a brief recess before moving into ten minutes. Okay, we are now back from recess, I'll have the reading of the motion to move into close.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. It resolved that council adjourn and camera at five forty-two P M. Pursuit to section two thirty-nine-two, the municipal act two thousand and one, as amended to discuss proposed or pending acquisitions or dispositions of land by the municipality or local ward for the following, item thirteen point one, request purchase part of law seven seventy-five, fine M one one eight T east of Comfort Street, and item thirteen point two, purchase part of law seven seventy-five, fine M one one eight T west of Park Street. And finally, that council adjourn and camera pursuant to section two thirty-nine-three-one for the purposes of education on the following matter, item thirteen point three, procedural bylaw, education on options.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Okay, we're now going to reconvene in open session.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. It resolved that council reconvene in open session at seven oh three P M.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Was there any conflicts coming out of closed? None noted? Matters from closed session, fourteen point one?
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Lad Chaba. It resolved that council direct the municipal clerk to bring forward a report containing amendments to be considered and updating council's procedural bylaw by year's end.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number fifteen, bylaw number twenty-three dash oh seven one, confirmation bylaw?
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. It resolved with the following bylaw, be read number passed, signed by the mayor municipal clerk, and a still corporation to get fixed there too. Number twenty-three seventy-one, being a bylaw confirming for students of council at its meeting held Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, adjourned.
Moved by councillor Lad Chaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved with this regular meeting of council, do now adjourn at seven oh four P M.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous, thank you, everyone.